Yeah, for sure. He just comes into our meeting like he just came over.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
On behalf of the, um, group.
Before, yeah. What's behind the player before.
Yeah. In fact, she's the person who, she got, she got beat.
It makes you, I don't know if it's on there.
No, 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 sorry. Um, kind of. Drugstore. Start with a date. Call meeting to order. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this evening as we back out to cities of Christ.
Amen.
Okay, this is the regular meeting of July the 12th, 2022, Noonan City Council. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of June the 14th, 2022. Before y'all entertain a motion, we'll get adopted.
So moved.
I do have one for options.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, under the internal request for funding American Rescue Act, um, it says rent a lease option for owners, but it's really a rent up.
Right down. All right, amend your motion.
I'll make that amended motion.
Sorry.
Second.
Second motion is second. We adopt as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Also, the minutes from the special call meeting on June the 15th, 2022 with Calhwood County Board of Commissioners, is their motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Also, minutes from the special call meeting of June 16th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Several appointments to boards and commissions. The first one is mine, and if we place that on our next meeting, please. Uh, Mr. Alexander, you're up next with cultural arts.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Phyllis Graham has decided to step down, so if we could send her a letter.
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna nominate Ms. Jenny Enderlin.
All right.
She's on Greenville Street.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Mr. DeBose, sure.
Jamie Rutledge will continue to serve.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Jamie Rutledge to the Cultural Arts Commission for a three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Ms. Jenkins.
Like to reappoint Makisha Strickland.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Makisha Strickland to the Cultural Arts Commission for a three-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Shell.
Could you put down the next agenda, please?
Certainly. Mr. Crickco.
Uh, again, send a letter to Ms. Brooks. I appreciate her service to the city. Uh, and next agenda, please.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander, keeping it beautiful.
Yes, sir. Next agenda, please.
Thank you. Mr. DeBose, keeping.
Rachel Mural needs to be reappointed.
Second.
Motion is second. We reappoint Rachel Mural to a three-year term on keep being beautiful. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Phillips, you have anything this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I think we're all aware of the, uh, situation that we've been experiencing uh, the last, uh, week or so with, uh, uh, the frequent, uh, inconveniences and the missed pickups by, uh, our sanitation provider. And obviously, we've been working really, really diligent and working a lot of hours, you know, trying to find resolution. Um, I actually released a statement today. Uh, for those of you all that are on, um, social media or visit our webpage, you, you may have seen and had a chance to, uh, to read the statement, but for those that haven't had it, I would like to go ahead and read it into the record, if you don't mind.
Sure. Absolutely.
Um, we are aware that residents of the city of Noonan have been experiencing inconsistent sanitation services from GFL, the city's residential refuse and recycling contractor. Most recently, the service delays have been significant and widespread. We learned on Monday, July the 11th, that GFL has been experiencing mechanical breakdowns within their truck fleet. At one point, a total of 15 trucks, representing 50% of their fleet within this service area, were out of service. GFL was not able to give the city in the meeting yesterday an estimated time as to when our residents would receive service. GFL stated that mechanics are en route from other regions of the company's service territory. GFL has been made aware of their contractual obligations, and the city has asked them to commit the necessary resources to service our residents immediately. We are closely monitoring the streets to see if the required resources are allocated. If GFL does not respond accordingly, the city is preparing to provide short-term solutions with internal resources. We apologize to our citizens for the inconveniences that have been created by the service interruptions. Please be assured that we hear your concerns and are working diligently towards a solution. For an update today, I will tell you that we still have areas that are not serviced. I, I will tell you, though, that there's been some progress. Uh, initially this morning, there were two, today's not our service day, obviously. There were two trucks that were put into service by GFL early this morning. Uh, there were two additional trucks that were put into service somewhere around lunchtime, and then there was a fifth truck that was put into service later today. Uh, so we have seen some service. Uh, we are going to continue to monitor it, certainly, and just to be transparent, our concern is with the allocation of resources, they, you know, they serve, I think, 30 to 35,000 accounts in the South Metro area out of that Fairburn location. And we're only about a fifth of those accounts. So our concern is if they're pulling resources to get us caught up, they may have, be experiencing and likely are experiencing service delays in other areas. We've heard of, uh, service delays. The Grantwell City Council discussed it, I think the Sharshberg City Council Commission had just discussed it. Uh, I've heard other reports. So we're really going to be closely monitoring what happens in the city of Noonan Thursday and Friday, what is our scheduled pickup day, and we're gonna have to respond accordingly. So I wanted to read that into the statement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions, Mr. Phillips?
Well, let me, let me just say, I'm, I've been as close to, to this over the last several days as I possibly could be and not be in your office, which I know you appreciate. Um, but it, our staff has worked extremely hard to find solutions to this problem and to bring, uh, Noonan to the attention of GFL. And, uh, it, it, what you said just a minute ago, we apologize to our citizens, and we do. Somebody sent me an email that said he wasn't very happy with me and the rest of the council, and I responded, well, I wouldn't, I'm not very happy with me, and of course, I didn't say the rest of the council, that was me. Uh, but we, we've got a situation here. We're trying our best to manage, and you're doing a great job of doing that, finding alternative for us if, if they, if they don't perform. So, but they're, on the other hand, they are a national company, which means they've got trucks in North Carolina and South Carolina and Tennessee and Florida and Alabama, and we expect them to pull their resources together in time of need to cover what they've got, with the issues they've got here. And we're gonna continue to push them to do that.
I, I do have a question. You made a comment about if, if they don't respond in appropriate time and, and take care of our citizens, then we're gonna allocate funds to do it ourselves in-house. Now, that being said, let's say that's the way we have to go, is there any, um, way that we can get them to reimburse us for such costs?
Well, I think that's certainly an attempt that we're going to make. I mean, obviously, the first thing that we have to do and we've been working on is we've been trying to line up those options for those trucks and those drivers. Uh, right now, we don't have the trucks available, so we're trying to make certain that we have those options at our disposal if the service delays continue. Uh, obviously, you know, we're going to track expenses. We're gonna know every dime that we spend on that, and certainly, we, we would make attempts to, to recover those fees, but obviously, the first priority is keep the city clean and safe.
Got you, Trump.
It's, it's dirty and it stinks out there in areas, and, and I, I see it. And at some point, we just got to, you know, worry about that second.
Right.
Understood.
But we would. Okay. Anything else? Any other comments or questions, city manager, on this? Okay, thanks. I don't have anything this evening. Under new business, uh, public hearing, Mr. Cole, how are you this evening?
Good, great. Thank you, Mayor.
This is a public hearing that I'm gonna open at this time. This is the 2022 update of the capital improvements element, including a 2022 update of the short-term work program.
Thank you, sir. I'm here to inform the public of the city of Noonan's completion and intent to adopt this update to the capital improvements element of the 2021-2041 comprehensive plan. This includes the short-term work program. Per the minimum standards of the planning process, all local governments must hold one public hearing prior to the transmittal of their updates. Official transmittal to the Three Rivers Regional Commission and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs is planned to be requested at the August 9th council meeting. After review and approval of the update by Three Rivers and the Department of Community Affairs, the council will be asked to officially adopt the update for 2022. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone here like to come forward to speak to the issue of the capital improvements element 2022, the update to that, or the 2022 update to the short-term work program? Seeing no one move? Uh-oh, Dean was gonna come forward and speak? No, you're not. Don't, don't move them. All right. So seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and move on to the next item on the agenda. There's no action needed on this item. Uh, Mr. Moody, presentation of an internal request for funding under American Rescue Plan Act, commonly known as ARPA.
Mayor and council, I'm glad to be before you again. Uh, the application in front of you is for the replacement of eight wheeler emergency alert sirens, and we have Nick Burgess from Calhwood County here to present a, uh, presentation on those sirens.
All right.
Good evening. Nick Burgess, if you'll just state your name for the. Yes, sir. My name is Nick Burgess. I'm the emergency management coordinator with Calhwood County.
How are you this evening?
I'm, I'm well. How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
So today, I wanted to come and just discuss what it, with the, some ideas about replacing the tornado sirens throughout the city. I do have some information put together. If you have questions, please let me know. I'm more than happy, thank you, to go into depth. So this first picture right here is just a brief overlay of what all of our sirens throughout the county look like. The light blue, of course, are the city sirens. So right now, there are 30 sirens for the actual tornado warning in Calhwood County. 22 in the county and eight in the city of Noonan. This next picture shows what our sirens look like at this, at this point. All of the city sirens are this Vortex siren on the left, and this is a directional siren, which means you, it makes one full rotation during an activation, so the sound is only going the way that the bell is pointed towards. The 10 stacks are what we're discussing to be, to be put in, to be installed for the upgrade. And these 10 stacks are 360 degrees, so they put out sound, the alert tone and the verbal message, 360 degrees throughout 100% of the message. So there is no drop throughout the area. This map is the current coverage for the city of Noonan with the city sirens, Vortex sirens that I mentioned before. The two, three red sirens are county-owned sirens. All of the blue are the directional 360, they, they make the spin, the vortex. To get the, to get a better coverage, hit this map, this next map would give you an idea of, just a proposed idea of locations for the new sirens. So you can tell what, what it looks like now, against what it could potentially look like with the new sirens. So it would take moving three or four in strategic locations to really get the maximum amount of coverage for a tornado warning. So the first siren to discuss is 5002. This is the siren at Noonan Utilities. We could move it to the front of Noonan High School to get a little bit more coverage, which would come up towards the square, which would really give us, maximize that coverage right now, because at the back of Noonan Utilities, you're losing a lot of your alert sound over the lakes. A lot of it's just going out over the lakes. And you can imagine with the directional, the siren that spins one time, 60% of that message is getting sprayed out over the lakes. So if we move that up with that 10 stack, I believe we'll get a lot better coverage, plus it's higher elevation. 5003, this is the VC substation, which is very, very close to the new Temple siren, the new 10 stack we have at Temple Avenue. So for this one, we're, as for ideas and suggestions, relocating that to the Poplar Road area, over by the hospital, more up towards Encompass Health in that area to really benefit that area of the community. 5004 is the Noonan Fire Department Station 2. That's a very good location for it. We would perhaps have to trim some trees for the 10 stack to go in, but that would be an, an excellent location for the, for the 10 stack. As well as Welch Elementary. You can see the picture on the right is what we currently have, and then we would be replacing that with a 360-degree 10 stack. Sprayberries BBQ, the one in the parking lot there, there's the current one. Sprayberry's Barbecue, the one in the parking lot there, there's the current one. If we did the, the ten stack, that would be in the same location, and we would hopefully be maximizing that mile and a half to a mile and a quarter range of coverage. Perry Street, there's, that's 5007, would be the same thing, same location, replaced with a ten stack. And then, one of the last to move would be the Ashley Park siren. So this siren is currently located at the bottom of the hill at that substation, and it actually has a rotor malfunction, so it doesn't rotate at all. So it's actually only putting out sound in one direction. So a suggested idea would be to move it up the hill, perhaps in one of the parking lots there, somewhere where we're getting higher coverage, that way we can maximize the sound as the alert goes out. The 5009 siren on Grayson Trail, that one again could be moved better, could be moved towards the east again, give us a little bit more coverage. A suggested area, just looking at the map and the layout, would be the Cliffhaven Circle area. All of these areas are just suggested ideas that could be edited and moved around as this body decides to do. So just a brief overview of what would be moved, potential sirens that would be in the same location, this idea, this map, or this gives you an idea of what I'm talking about. And as far as just a, an idea about these sirens, the ten stacks, what we currently have in the city, it does not do any silent testing. Inside the, outside in the county, we do a silent test every Monday morning, which pushes, pushes a message out to every siren and receives back, what is my battery voltage? Is anything wrong, are all my amps talking? And it does a siren, a silent test, and makes all the amps spin up. We currently do not have that capability with the older sirens. So as we go through maintenance, having that ability is very helpful, especially going into tornado season. Is there any questions I can answer? Yes, sir.
Mr. Burgess, when you're locating these or looking at the present locations of some of them, are you taking into account topography? And where I'm going with this is, you wouldn't want a siren kind of down in a hole, so to speak, because then it's going to, when, when it starts making that noise, maybe some hills are, are going to block it. So has that been taken into account?
Yes, sir. We absolutely are taking that into account, and one to, to speak on is like the Ashley Park Substation. We wouldn't want to replace that with the, the ten stack there, because of the point you make, it's down in the hole, we want to move it. So even that Cliffhaven Circle, that's up on a higher location, and the Newnan High School moving from Newnan Utilities up onto top of the property there, if that was possible.
Thank you. Okay, so it seems to me that you, a couple of times said, with our input and, and who's making the decision on where, because I don't, I'm not sure we have that skill set sitting up here. We might, but I don't, I don't possess it. So who's going to?
Mayor Brady, members of the council, we've been working in concert with Mr. Burgess, as well as Mr. Terrell, as well as Stephen Brown, and members of the fire department here in Newnan, to make these determinations, so we would, with your blessing, continue to do so. I guess we're here before you.
And also the industry expert, don't forget that.
That's right. We do have contractors that know this probably even a little better than we do.
So you're looking for us to allocate the money?
Yes, sir.
Professionals do their work?
Yes, sir.
Good job.
I've got a couple of questions. Four of the eight would need to be relocated. What's the cost to relocate those? I mean, is that included in the cost for the ARPA that we're requesting tonight?
Yes, sir. I believe that will be in the full quote for, to move them, for the, it should be roughly about forty-eight thousand per siren we're looking at.
Okay. And are they all going to be, and are they all the ones that you're not going to move all, either on located on, uh, public property or on public right of ways?
The current sirens that go in the same place would be in public locations. For instance, the Sprayberry parking lot, but that may be, I'm not sure if that's right of way, or if Sprayberry owns it, so that would be a question I'm not, I do not have the answer to. So if we put one on Newnan High School, that would be something we'd have to work with the school system to get permission to do. The Cliffhaven Circle would be more than likely a right of way, she would probably be out closer to Lower Fayette, so that would, that shouldn't be an issue. And then the Papa Road area would really just depend on the agreed location to put it, to get the most coverage. Right now, looking at the topography, around that Encompass Health area is going to be our best bet.
Okay. And final question is, you, you alluded to that we're heading into tornado season. What's the timeline for acquisition and installation and movement and all that stuff?
Yes, sir. Well, because of the pandemic, we are still facing shortages all throughout, especially on poles. The concrete poles are the hardest thing for us to get right now for putting up these sirens, and I unfortunately could not tell you when they would be able to get them, because they cannot provide that information. But I would hope to say that we could have one within two years. I would, I like to say a year, but with the pandemic, it's really a shot in the dark.
So is this something you would just install on the current poles, and then when we get the concrete poles and just swap them out, or?
No, sir. These would have to go on the concrete poles in one, one project as they are, as they are brought in.
Okay. Thank you.
So we allocate the money if this evening it exists?
The price is only good for another two days, three days?
Three days. Yes, sir.
We're locking the price.
We only have one meeting this morning. That was important, we should have told you.
So if we allocate the money, and we lock in the price, is that what you're telling?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. The price isn't going to go up on us?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion? Make a motion?
Second.
Motion, second, approved, discussion. Go ahead.
You'd mentioned that these are, in here it says they're on batteries. If we might not get them for another two years, what is the kind of a warranty cycle do we have on these things, and that, I'm truly hoping that like the warranty or whatever doesn't start now, it waits till we actually?
It would start when they're installed.
Okay. Is there, and what kind of a warranty cycle do we have on these, for like, especially the batteries and?
Well, the batteries are going to be strictly on a maintenance plan. It's what we're starting right now in the county. Like we mentioned, the batteries have about a five-year lifespan, but we like to watch them all throughout the months with that monthly or that weekly test to see when we're losing voltage, because batteries are going to go in and out. That's going to be one of our big expenditures throughout maintenance is batteries.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I do have a motion, second, to approve the request. Thank you for your report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Mr. Moody, you're still up.
Yes, sir.
All right. The, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to appropriate ARPA funds to a vegetative debris removal program within the tornado track. This program would allocate a total of one million dollars to the program with a maximum award amount of twenty-five thousand to property owners.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion, second. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Moody.
And thank you, staff, for, for coming up with this solution to help our citizens who are still dealing with tornadoes.
Trying to replace our lack of FEMA funds, though.
Yeah, it does.
Exactly. The next item is for information only, but it is a rezoning request, RZ 2022-07 by Robert Bergman on behalf of Fourth Quarter Properties LLC for eight point four-four acres located at 440 Noonan Crossing Bypass. Tax par, tax parcel number zero eight six five zero four three zero zero four. Requested change in the MXD mixed-use development plans conditions to add seventy-two more apartment units from seven, to seventy-eight to three fifty. Like I said before, this is information only, be passed on to the planning commission. The next item, I'm going to have to recuse myself on because of my business relationship with the owner of the property, and I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tim DeBose to handle this issue.
This is an annexation request, Annex 2022-05 by Jeff Anthony on behalf of Leonard Georgia LLC. Thirty-one point seven-nine acres located at 521 Lower Fayetteville Road, tax parcel zero eight seven fifty eleven zero zero one. Requested zoning of PDR, a planned development residential district for a combination of a ninety single-family home and sixty townhouse units. That's a decision on referral to the planning commission. So that does not require a motion, it's just being sent to the planning commission?
You need, you do need a motion on that one?
Oh, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Notion, a second, any question? Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. So carried.
Thank you, Mr. DeBose. So now we go to unfinished business. The first item is public hearing, annexation request 2022-03, Donnell Sprayberry Jr., Sprayberry's Barbecue, Inc., for one point two-two acres at 30 Amelie Jack Boulevard, tax parcel number zero nine seven five zero four four zero one three. Requested zoning of heavy commercial. This is, Mr. Smith, how are you, sir?
I'm well. Yourself?
I'm fine, thank you. And this is a public hearing we've opened at this time. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you mentioned, and this is a brief summary, the full depth of the report is available on the website for anyone that would like to access it. The subject site is one point two-two acres located across I-85 from city limits, as you see in the exhibit. That would be the connective tissue they've approved that would connect it to the city limits. The purpose of this request is to upgrade existing billboard sign, or what we term in our regulations as a highway sign. The existing highway sign is a legal non-conforming sign as exists today in unincorporated Calhwyd County. Based upon the county's regulations, this property is ineligible for any new signs or upgrades to an existing sign. The applicant desires to bring this property into the city with a heavy commercial zoning category for the purpose of being able to upgrade to a newer and larger highway sign. The property is currently zoned M1 industrial district in Calhwyd County, as are the adjacent tracks. Heavy commercial zoning in the city is a less intensive use than the current M1 industrial district category. In terms of standards, we pose the following questions. Is the proposed use suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent nearby properties? And we believe that it is suitable. Will the proposed use adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property? We don't believe there will be, it may be minimal, if any, effect. Are there substantial reasons why the property cannot or should not be used as currently zoned? As I mentioned, the property is ineligible for a billboard or any upgrades to the existing billboard under county guidelines. There may be some possible other uses that could be allowed in the county's M1 industrial district zoning, but the property cannot be used for a highway billboard sign. Will the proposed use cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities or services, included but not limited to street, schools, water or sewer utilities, and police or fire protection? And the answer to that question is no. Is the proposed use compatible with the purpose and intent of the comprehensive plan? Although not contemplated in the last city future land use map, the county's comprehensive plan shows this as an employment center character area, and is also within close proximity to existing city jurisdiction where highway signs are permissible. Is the proposed use consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district? Yes. Is the proposed use supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? Yes. Does the proposed use reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare, and the right to unrestricted use of property? Yes. In summary, the annexation petition 2022-03 meets all of the eight standards contained in our ordinance. There has been no objection from Calhwyd County to the proposed annexation. On June 21st of this year, the planning commission conducted a public hearing. The result was a six to zero vote to forward this annexation request to this body with a recommendation for approval along with the following conditions, and there's three of them. One, is along with an annexation and rezoning that a special exception be granted for the construction of a highway sign. In accordance with city sign regulations, the maximum size would be four hundred square feet, maximum height would be sixty-five feet, minimum setback is sixty-five feet from the interstate and forty feet from all property lines. Number two, to grant a variance to reduce the required interstate road frontage from four hundred feet to three hundred and sixty-four feet. And three, upon adoption of the annexation rezoning ordinance, the use of the property would be limited for only a billboard sign for a one-year period. After one year, the property would be eligible for other uses allowed in heavy commercial zoning district, with the exception of prohibited uses listed in the ordinance. And if you'd like, I'd be glad to provide you a list of prohibited uses and enter that in the record, up to your discretion.
Thank you. Do you want to have any questions? I have a question, Mayor. What, what is the square feet of that sign currently?
I do not know. I know that it's smaller than four hundred square feet.
That's, yes, that's all. Okay.
I've got a quick question. Number four, you know, saying, for the assessment that it would not require any public facilities or services, every now and again, has that just kind of a blue moon type thing, is we get little wildfires springing up? If the fire department had to service over there, that's kind of out and about, is that some of the city fire would have to resolve since that's now in the city?
More than likely, but it would not be necessarily a result of this particular use. It may be, as you mentioned, a random wildfire, which doesn't necessarily reflect the particular use that's proposed.
Okay. And I, and I see that just, that part of that property, butts pretty close to the property lines and the actual structures of several other buildings. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have that one. Clarifying question, because I don't know if this has anything to do with the law or what, but why one year?
It does have to do with the way the county accepted this initial annexation application. When it was first presented to them, the use was strictly that as a highway billboard sign. In the meeting with the planning commission, the applicant mentioned they would like to consider other allowed uses for heavy commercial zoning, and with that in mind, the limitation has to be, is my understanding, for one year, unless they want to go back to the county and resubmit a new application, and let the county be aware, and given the opportunity to respond to other possible uses within the heavy commercial zoning district.
So, so this isn't a parameter that we have put on there because of anything other than a procedural issue?
That's correct.
Not a concern of any sort?
No, ma'am. That's correct.
What, what kind of uses are they proposing, and how would that impact our services, again, looking to the future? If they were to construct something there, now we have to provide public services over there?
I'd be glad the applicant to answer that, but I can tell you, in our conversations with the applicant thus far, there have not been any designated uses or any providers mentioned.
Well, applicant's here this evening, so.
So they can answer that question.
If you're through with your report, and we're through with our questions of, Mr. Smith, and if the applicant will come forward, this is your opportunity to speak on your So, Mr. Quick, your question was, and if you'll identify yourself with the record.
I'm Stephen Sprayberry, my brother's on vacation this week, but he and I own the property together.
So my question is, with one year, you can only put a billboard. After that, it's zoned now for the heavy commercial. Apparently, according to the report, the county said that you were proposing or had thoughts about putting something in there at some, at some time in the future?
No, we, we ain't got any, we've, we've always had the land for nothing but a sign. That's what, you know, we just wondered if somebody came and offered us a ton of money for it, you know, way down the line, that we wouldn't be tied to know you can't do anything but put a billboard on it. No, we, we ain't, we ain't got any intention of doing anything with it but put a sign on it.
Okay. And I just want to make sure, you know, what, what this would be encumbering the city up for, public service-wise, in the future at some point, when you sell that for some unearthly amount of money?
Yeah, well, yeah, we had, I mean, we, we had got it for sale and not planning on selling it.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant, or does applicant have any other comments?
I don't have any other comments.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here who's opposed to this annexation request and zoning? This is your opportunity to come forward in opposition. I don't see anyone coming forward. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion with the council for, to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission. So moved?
Second.
Okay, so is a motion to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Is there a motion to annex? So moved? Motion, a second, annex is presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to adopt the zoning?
So moved.
Second. Motion to second to adopt the zoning is presented. Any discussion on that? Questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next item this evening, this is also a public hearing. This is a rezoning request, RZ 2022-05, by George Rosenzweig on behalf of South Tree Commercial Development, LLC and STG Noonan, LLC, for 0, I'm sorry, for .741 acres located at 18 Savannah Street, parcel number N120001010, from Light Industrial District to CBD, the Central Business District, to operate a microbrewery. And this is a consideration of the ordinance on the rezoning. Ms. Donovan, how are you?
Doing well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As you stated, this is a request to go from an ILT to a CBD zoning for the purpose of operating a microbrewery. The petitioner would actually like to expand the building to the west and use the existing parking lot for an entertainment area, which would include a food truck yard, a seating area, an outside bar, and a stage. Parking would be provided on the adjacent lot to the west. The site itself is currently occupied by a commercial building that is being used by Knox Furniture. Staff has completed an assessment of eight of the required standards, and I'll go ahead and give a quick summary of each of these. Staff felt the proposed use would be suitable in view of zoning and development of adjacent and nearby properties since the proposed use is actually already permitted in the current zoning district. The reason that they are requesting a CBD zoning is that the ILT requires them to put all the parking on that space, or only 50% could be put on the one next door. And because they want to do the entertainment area, they would like to be able to put all the parking on the next one. So they're asking for a CBD. And in addition, it would allow them to do the expansion. The ILT has a greater setback, and so this would allow them to be able to do the expansion of the building to the west. In terms of the properties, the majority of the properties within that block are already zoned CBD with just a few zoned ILT. There are some existing homes on Thompson Street. However, there are two streets and a railroad right away between the existing building and those homes. In addition, the entertainment area will actually be located on the west side of the building, and that should help buffer the noise. Will the proposed use have an adverse impact on adjacent or nearby property? Again, staff said there may be a limited adverse impact due to the noise and possibly on-street overflow parking during events, but those homes are 300 feet away from the entertainment area. And the business will have to adhere to the city's noise ordinance, which bans sustained and amplified sound in the Central Business District between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. Could it be used as currently zoned? As we discussed before, it could under the ILT, but they would have to not have the entertainment area as they would prefer to have, and they would be impacted in terms of setbacks. Would the project cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities? There will be minor impact in terms of service provision, and all of the service providers, which are in your packet there, their reports, have indicated that they are able to address the needs of the development with the current staffing levels. In terms of the comprehensive plan, our future land use map does show this property as future historic downtown. This use would be compatible with that designation. The applicant plans to use the existing building while maintaining the character of the area with the proposed expansion. In addition, the applicant is proposing to use railroad shipping containers as an outdoor stage, bar, and storage areas, which would pay homage to the two rail lines which border the property and give it that industrial feel of the area, which is already there. A microbrewery would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district as it is permitted use in the CBD district. Would the proposed use be supported by new or changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? Again, you all completed your full update of the comprehensive plan in 2021, and you gave this property a future historic downtown designation, and there haven't been any new or changing conditions that have been discussed or considered since that update. Staff does feel that this shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, and general welfare, and the right to unrestricted use of property. As I've stated, ILT already allows the requested use. The CBD zoning designation would permit the applicant to develop the outdoor space, which would be limited under the current zoning. There would be very little impact on service provision, and the requested zoning would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So in summary, staff felt that the development met seven of the eight required standards. The Planning Commission, at their June 21st, 2022 meeting, held a public hearing, and they unanimously recommended approval of the request with the following two conditions. One would be that the project will be consistent with the concept plan and renderings provided as part of the rezoning application. And the applicant is here to show you those renderings, and they're also included in your packet. And the applicant would also provide 18 parking spaces, which would be what they would be required to provide on space now with the ILT zoning, either on the subject track or on the adjacent track to the west to make sure that there is going to be parking there for that site. And that is a report of the Planning Commission.
Any questions of Ms. Donovan? Thank you, Ms. Donovan. This is the opportunity for the applicant to come forward to speak on their own behalf. If there's anyone here, applicant. You'll state your name for the record, please.
George Rosenzweig. I represent the applicant. And I do have a slideshow here if I can... As Ms. Donovan said, the applicant tonight is South Tree Commercial. And here with me is Chuck Ogletree. He's one of the owners of South Tree. And he's also one of the owners of the entity that will operate the microbrewery on the property. Also present is Kip Oldham. He's the project architect and project designer. And our ask tonight... Let me get my right instrument here, not get anybody in the eye. We're asking for rezoning from ILT to CBT for, as Ms. Donovan said, a microbrewery. Whoops. This is a conceptual rendering of what the completed building will look like. And those of you that have been down there, the existing building is going to be retained. And this is the covered seating area that Ms. Donovan mentioned. This is the existing property. And to orient you just a little bit better, this is the Salbeedie Railroad Bridge up here. Here's the railroad. This goes down to Greenville Street. This is that little side street you take off right after the railroad bridge. This is the existing building on the property. This is the property to the west she talked about. And this area further to the west is where the 12 Savannah Restaurant used to be many years ago. This is the existing zoning of the area. And again, as you can see, most of it is CBD already. Here's our property. And there is a little bit that's still zoned light industrial. This is the site plan. And here is the existing building. This is the covered seating area that we talked about. This is the stage that'll be made out of the railroad containers. This is outdoor seating area. This is the food truck area where the food trucks will be. They aren't going to have a restaurant on the property. What they'll have is rotating food trucks. And then they do have a setup with menus from local restaurants with delivery services to provide the food service to the property. This shows a before and after of the building. Kip's done a real nice job of retaining the character, but updating it somewhat. This shows some of the outdoor seating area. It's a little hard to see, but right here is one of the food trucks parked. And it really is a very nice setup. I'd never... They have a Business Line Creek Brewery over in Peachtree City. I'd never been to one. My wife and I went over there on Memorial Day. And it's a real slick setup. They have the picnic tables outside, and you can get your food truck food. It's a real clean, nice operation. This is another view of the outdoor area. You can see up there on the right one of the boxcar containers made into the bar. These are examples from their existing businesses in Peachtree City and Fayetteville, just giving you an example. This one is kind of interesting in that here you can see the actual microbrewery area. This one, here's another shot of it, and some of the products that they have available there. So here we are, back to our conceptual rendering of the building. This is our ask for rezoning from ILT to CBD. That way, we can put all the parking over to the west, add the outdoor seating area. And, whoops. And here we are, back to the site plan. And with that, I'll reintroduce to you Chuck Ogletree, one of the owners of South Tree and one of the owners of the company, the related entity that'll operate the microbrewery on the property.
Thank you. As George said, my name's Chuck Ogletree with South Tree Commercial. We're the developer for this project, but I'm also an owner in Line Creek Brewing Company. So, you know, we've been talking about coming to Noonan for a number of years now. We've really wanted to come down here. We've explored a lot of opportunities, but just haven't found the right fit yet. One of the things that we've learned over the last few years, there's two ingredients that we think that make a successful brewery: great beer and a great environment. And I think with this location, we can achieve both. You know, over the last couple of years, we've determined that people want to be outside. That's where they really want to hang out. And so we've tried to expand our outdoor areas in Peachtree City, but also in Fayetteville as well. So that's where we want to try to focus, and that's why we're asking for this rezoning, so that we can enhance this outdoor area. Couple of challenges with that outdoor area is that it faces west. So we've got some challenges when it comes to creating shade. And that's some ideas that Kip has come up with that will create the shade that we need out there, but just make it a great outdoor environment where people want to hang out. We also, when we go to an area, we also like to try to invest ourselves in the community. We want to be a central hub for Noonan. We want to make this a unique brewery to Noonan. There are some things that we want to do here that we would not do in any other location. One of the things that we're looking at doing is turning this into our Barrel Age program. We like to do, bring in whiskey barrels and aged beer in the whiskey barrels. And we're going to have a lot of these stacked all around the facility. We do a little bit of that in Peachtree City and not much in Fayetteville, but we kind of make this our hub for our Barrel Age program. Inside the brewery itself, we'll have private meeting rooms where people can have birthday parties, business meetings, you know, baby showers. Just make it a community hub, and that's what we're trying to do. So, you know, we're asking you to do this, grant this rezoning, but it's specifically more for us to have the ability to do this outdoor entertainment area. We think it's what makes the brewery. So we're asking you to grant this rezoning, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I've got a question. Maybe it's probably for staff. I noticed... Maybe Mr. Oldham could answer this. There's a lot of landscaping to the north, a lot of landscaping to the west. But, and I see trees and whatever, but I don't see much to the... Maybe a little bit to the south and none to the east. What... Is there a plan for that, or what's...
Well, the east side of the facility, which is the right side on this plan, is going to be where we're going to have our... We're actually going to have an outside cooler that connects to the building, but we're also going to have our chiller and other equipment. We'll screen it with a fence. We'll have an access area where our truck will come in and bring beer in from other locations. So that's going to be more of a service area than anything else. The south side, which is really the front of the building, people are going to access this from a couple of different locations. You know, the parking that we've talked about is on the west side. And, you know, we can probably park close to 100 cars there, and that's where the majority of people will park, and they'll enter in from the west side. And there'll be a main door on the west side. But the south side will also be accessible to the public. We're going to do some re-landscaping in there as well. We don't want to change a lot of the grades in there. The grades pretty much stay the same, but we'll do some landscaping. When it comes to the west side, a lot of that's going to be more of type a crushed stone or crushed slate-type material. A pervious surface out there is what we're looking at in that area, but there'll also be some sod in front of the containers or the stage. We want to have that, kind of a grassy, sodded area where kids can run around and play and do that kind of thing.
But you will have screening, you say, on the east side?
Yes, yes, we will.
To Mr. Alexander's point on that, you know, that Dunbar Place, when you're coming down Salbeedie and you're looking that way and you're coming into it from that direction, what kind of screening are we talking about? I know you feel like you're describing it I know you feel like you're describing it as the backup house, but it really is visible from one of our main roads to come in and from a project we're probably going to have to access.
Depending on the height of the cooler and the chiller, we'll put in some type of solid privacy fence. We anticipate in the future with the Caldwell Tank Site that that'd be a pedestrian-friendly area coming down to the brewery, so we'll have a lot of people coming in in that direction. We don't have all that laid out at this point, but we understand there'll be a lot of traffic coming from that eventually, so we'll need to do as much screening as we can.
And make it clear.
Yeah, we would love to come down on the southeast corner, kind of across the street, and clean up some of that mess that's down there as well. It's railroad property, so, but we're hoping to try to work with them to clean that up and across the street as well.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I think also as Caldwell Tank Site develops, of course, which y'all are doing great, and it's going to start causing more development across the track where they'll come across that bridge and up Dunbar Place, so, I mean, I, that's where I was going with that. You're going to have foot traffic there. Thank you.
I understand.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. This is an opportunity for anyone who's opposed to this rezoning to come forward and speak. Anyone here opposed to this rezoning request? This is your opportunity to come forward and speak. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the report and recommendation from the planning commission. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Is there a motion on the rezoning request itself?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. The next item on the agenda this evening of Mr. Murray is 157 La Grange Street. The owner updated and requests for extension. I was headed out to Noonan High School today, and there's a big machine in front of this house tearing it down.
That is correct, yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Well, yeah, just for a brief explanation here, yes, this property was before you in late May, and at that point, a sixty-day resolution was granted to repair and demolish the property. The property was sold and wasn't closed until the twenty-eighth of June, so he wasn't sure if he was going to be able to get his utility disconnects, schedule the equipment and all. He had been able to get it on-site. He was able to coordinate with the contractor. He also purchased 178 La Grange Street, and that was demolished.
I saw that too. Thank you very much.
Right. Yes, sir. That made everybody happy. And that was, he was able to transfer that equipment down from that site to 157, and he just hasn't been able to complete the rest of the demolition they've started, but he's asking thirty days to complete the demolition and remove the debris, so.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, with grant the thirty-day extension to complete the demolition and remove the debris. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the second final reading of rezoning request, RZ 2022-03 by Sheriff McWilliams for point two-two acres at fourteen Lee Street from OI-1 Low Density Office Institutional District to RU-1 Urban Residential Dwelling District Historic Infield. This is a second and final reading. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. This next item is also a second and final reading, but there is a Mr. Kelly who has signed the signing sheet to speak to this. Mr. Kelly, you're here this evening?
Yes.
Okay. This is, if you'll come forward, I'll, let me explain to you what we're doing. We had the public hearing on this at our last meeting.
I think you signed the wrong one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The gentleman from the Alamo. So we just put the wrong.
Yeah.
You put the wrong letter.
Yeah, he's here for the Alamo.
Sorry.
No explanation needed, wrong letter, okay. This is the second final reading rezoning request, RZ 2022 by Alice Corneo of the DUI School of Kaweta, Inc., point two-seven acres and thirty-nine Main Street, at thirty-nine Main Street, from RU-7 Urban Residential Single Family Dwelling High Density to CGN Commercial District. This is the second final reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, we approve on second final reading. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. We appreciate it, sir. Thank you for being here. The next item on the agenda is asked to have this item continued until our August twenty-third, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, we continue the next item on the agenda to our August twenty-third, 2022 meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. The next item under visitors is a request from Cody Kelly. Mr. Kelly?
Bless you.
Completely, now you're not Steven, you're Cody. Good, okay. All right. How are you this evening?
Thank you. I'm doing good. So yeah, I'm Cody Kelly. Worked at the Alamo. Guess we met a couple of months ago, asking about reserving these spaces just to do special events that we do on the first Friday of the month, late night. It all went super well. It was really nice. We had a few cars parked out. People commented, took pictures, and laughed and had a good time overall. Didn't really seem to run any problems or any issues. You know, we had Noonan PD there to monitor the cars. Plenty of taking all the proper precautions, you know. It was all really cool, and I just appreciate you guys letting me be able to do that. I'd love to be able to continue doing that.
And from the city's perspective, we saw no-
That's correct, sir. We haven't received any complaints to date.
Right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, a second.
Second.
Is there, okay. Motion, a second, with grant the request. Any other questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
What time originally?
So-
How do you block it off?
Originally, it's at nine to two AM, and we said that eight was going to be okay. So every day I come to work at around four, three o'clock to set up for these events. At the beginning of the parking space, still on the sidewalk, we have sandwich boards that just say, "Reserve from eight PM to two AM." And then right around eight PM, we have our host walk outside, grab a traffic cone, block off the spot. So it remains open the whole time, just a little notice for people.
So starting about eight, eight PM?
Yes, sir.
You're going to block it off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. That ends our regular agenda this evening. Is anyone else here who's off agenda? Okay, we do have a need for an executive session this evening for personnel.